Good afternoon. And welcome to this meeting of the City University of New York Board of Trustees. I'd like to announce that at the conclusion of our first public session, we will be going into executive session to discuss personnel matters. And then we will be reconvening for a second public session following our executive session discussion. May I ask that everyone take a moment to mute your cellphones or BlackBerrys? As usual, CUNY TV is transmitting the public sessions of this afternoon's meeting of the Board live on cable channel seventy-five. The meeting is also being webcast live and can be accessed by going to www.cuny.edu. The public session of this Board meeting will be available as a podcast within twenty-four hours and can also be accessed via the CUNY website. I would like to warmly welcome Professor Sandy E. Cooper, who took office as UFS Chair on August twenty-fifth, two thousand and ten, for a two-year term. Professor Cooper, welcome back, and we look forward to working with you. I would also like to extend our warm welcome to City College President Lisa Stianokoyko. And I'd like to thank Trustee Charles Shorter, Chair of the City College Presidential Search Committee, as well as all the other members who served on that committee. Welcome as well to Baruch College President Mitchell Wallerstein. And thank you to Trustee Peter Panteleo, who chaired the Baruch College Presidential Search Committee. And thanks as well to the other members who served on that committee. I want to welcome also Interim President Diana Bovacall of Queensborough Community College, and Interim President Peter Katopis of LaGuardia Community College. And last but certainly not least, welcome in a new role to Eduardo Marti, our first Vice Chancellor for Community Colleges. Welcome to all these new members of the family. It is with great sadness that I note the passing of Professor Martha Bell on August seventeenth, a Brooklyn College professor for more than three decades, Chair of the Brooklyn College Seek Department, and a member of the University Faculty Senate. Professor Bell served for many years as a member of the Board's Standing Committee on Student Affairs and Special Programs. Her academic integrity, outstanding leadership, dedication to students, her concern for broad access to education and to financial support for CUNY made a major contribution to this institution. I am also deeply saddened to note the passing of Dr. Rachel P. Weddington, a former Dean of Teacher Education at CUNY, who served with distinction, both as a senior administrator and for many years as a professor at Queens College. May I now call on Trustee Valerie Beal to announce college and faculty honors?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Several CUNY colleges have recently achieved high rankings in prominent national publications about the nation's colleges. The U.S. News and World reports two thousand and eleven Best Regional Universities listing ranked Hunter College eighth among the nation's two thousand and eleven Top Ten Public Regional Universities in the North, while Baruch College also received a high ranking at number twenty-five. The Princeton Review named Hunter College and Queens College in its two thousand and eleven list of the best two hundred and seventy-three colleges in the country. Hunter College was also selected as one of two hundred and eighty-six colleges for inclusion in the Princeton Review's Guide to Green Colleges. Baruch College ranked at number nineteen on the Forbes College Ranking List, America's Best College Byes. While the Most Desirable Large Schools category of the two thousand and ten Kaplan Newsweek Finding the Right College for You guide ranked Baruch College twenty-second on their list. Finally, Baruch College ranked at number seventeen on the Top Twenty-Five Undergraduate Programs for Entrepreneurship list by the Princeton Review and Entrepreneur Magazine. Congratulations to Baruch, Brooklyn, Hunter, and Queens colleges. Hunter College distinguished professor and Executive Director of its MFA in Creative Writing Program, Peter Carey, was nominated for a third Booker Prize for his new book, Parrot and Oliver in America. Hunter distinguished professor of sociology Nancy Fauner won the two thousand and ten Distinguished Career Award from the International Migration Section of the American Sociological Association. And distinguished professor of psychology Victoria Lunin won the Society of Neuroscience' Bernice Grasnian Award for Outstanding Accomplishments in Mentoring. Congratulations. This concludes my report.
Thank you very much. May I call on Trustee Kathleen Pacilli to announce student and alumni honors?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Baruch College Political Science Student Masai Lutsi Wu was recently selected as a two thousand and ten Thomas Pickering Foreign Affairs Fellow. This program is funded by the U.S. Department of State and administered by the Woodrow Wilson National Fellowship Foundation. This prestigious fellowship award includes up to fifty thousand dollars annually towards tuition and related expenses during the senior year of college and during the first year of graduate study. Congratulations. Thirty-nine out of fifty student scholarships of five thousand dollars each were awarded to CUNY students from senior and community colleges through the new program, New York Needs You, founded and led by Goldman Sachs Vice President Robert Rifkin. CUNY students were featured prominently at their benefit dinner event on September fifteenth. Recent City College graduates Anna C. Eggers and Linda Jan de Kova were headed to South America and Asia this fall to document social change. They're as two thousand and ten Mortimer Hayes Brandeis Traveling Fellows. They are ninth and tenth CCNY students respectively to receive the prestigious awards since nineteen ninety-four. Congratulations. Three Hunter College students, recent alumna Maria Artinez, urban planning graduate student Heidi Exline, and two thousand and ten McCollough Honors College graduate Lauren Vrienas, received Fulbright fellowships to study abroad for the two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven academic year. Congratulations. Six years of diligent research work coupled with steadfast support and encouragement from faculty and students at the College of Staten Island has landed a local Staten Island Tech High School student Neha Banerjee a spot at the International Science and Engineering Fair Competition to be held next month in San Jose, California. Congratulations. Sixteen LaGuardia Community College students learned firsthand what it is like to attend classes and to dorm at one of the most competitive institutions in the nation when they became Bernard College Collegians for five weeks over the summer. The goal of the Bernard LaGuardia Intercollegiate Partnership Summer Program, which is entering its eighteenth year, is to encourage LaGuardia students who are interested in science to pursue a bachelor's degree in the field by exposing them to a four-year college experience. Congratulations. Nine New York City College of Technology students, representing the largest number of students from the same CUNY college, earned twenty-five hundred dollar Teachers as Leaders Project scholarships. In addition, the students will participate in New York State Teacher Certification Examination Workshops and will be mentored by current and former New York City public school teachers. Congratulations. Mr. Chairman, this concludes my report.
Thank you very much. You have in your trustees' book and available at the table a list of all grants and gifts received by the university subsequent to the June twenty-eighth, two thousand and ten Board Meeting. I'll now turn to Chancellor Goldstein to present his report on recent activities.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me begin by complimenting our chairman and congratulating him. Benno Schmidt has been selected to receive the Philip Merrill Award for Outstanding Contributions to Liberal Arts Education from the American Council of Trustees and Alumni. For those of you who don't know of the organization, this is an organization of trustees and alumni who select individuals yearly who have made an extraordinary contribution to the advancement of liberal arts education, core curricula, and teaching of Western Civilization and American History. The award is named, for those of you who may not know, Mr. Merrill, for a late public servant, publisher, entrepreneur, and philanthropist. Benno, just to show you, you're in very good company. Prior winners include Robert George, the McCormick Professor of Jurisprudence at Princeton University, Harvey Mansfield, the William R. Kennan Professor of Government at Harvard, and most recently Donald Kagan, the Sterling Professor of History and Classics at Yale University. I'm privileged to introduce Benno and a number of trustees will be joining us in Philadelphia for that important event for you, Benno, and for the university as well. And congratulations, that's quite an honor. We will be having a reception on Tuesday, October nineteenth, at the New York Public Library to welcome Lisa Stianokoyko, to welcome Mitch Wallerstein, to welcome our new interim President Diane Cole, and interim President Peter Katopis, among other appointments that will happen before that event. And I look forward to seeing all of you there. I spent the good part of the summer, and it's not over yet, spending a lot of time with presidents and deans of our professional schools going through the annual performance management process. And I would have been finished by then, by this, if I weren't distracted by some other things that I had to do this summer. But I do want to say to the trustees, very, very directly, that we are experiencing extraordinary growth in terms of the quality of what we measure here at the university. I am absolutely delighted and emboldened by how much progress has been made across the university. Board of Trustees ought to know that we have an extraordinary group of women and men who are the leaders in the trenches, out on the campuses, really working with faculty and others to advance the goals of this great university. And it was really a privilege to listen to all of you, your dreams, your aspirations, and your accomplishments. It was a wonderful, arduous experience, but nonetheless uplifting as well. Our enrollment continues to grow at this university. Our flash enrollment figures indicate that we have, this fall, approximately two hundred and sixty-three thousand students in degree programs here at the university. This represents about a one point four percent increase over the same time last year, and an equivalent number of students studying in our continuing and professional development program. So the university continues to grow, not only in reputation, but in terms of people who want to devote their time at a university to studying at CUNY. I'm also delighted to see the continuing march on, upward march, of SAT scores this year. There's been a thirty-three-point increase at our top-tier institutions. Many of them are now hovering around the twelve-hundred mark. There is no time in our history, Mr. Chairman, where we've seen SATs move in this direction, and it's infiltrating throughout the university overall. And I think all of us should take great pride that this university not only maintains its rich diversity, but it also is attracting people that were saying no to this university just a few years ago. On a more heavy note, I want to remind the Board that, starting in mid-two thousand and seven, I started to talk to the presidents about what we started to see as a looming downturn in the economy, having, you know, studied a lot of the financial data from all sorts of places, shared this with the presidents. Never in my wildest imagination would I have envisaged that the fiscal climate in these United States would have been as dire and as deep and as long-lasting. And we're not out of it at all. The university is going to be facing some challenging times, and I'll talk about that in just a minute. But we will, a little later on in the meeting, Mr. Chairman, hear from Matthew Sapienza, who I've asked to give a PowerPoint, brief PowerPoint presentation of the status of our financial health, followed by a brief report from Iris Wandschall, who I've asked to do something similar on the capital program of the university. Many of you may remember that two years ago, I established three working groups coordinated by Executive Vice Chancellor Alan Dobrin to provide long-term options to help us to get through a difficult fiscal period. And again, I wrote to all of the trustees, any of you that want to participate in these deliberations, I've reached out to the Faculty Senate as well, although they are involved. But we'd like to get as many people involved in these discussions as well. Just to briefly summarize what those three committees are, the interim Senior Vice Chancellor Mark Shaw and Associate Vice Chancellor Matthew Sapienza will oversee a budget working group that is examining the areas of university expenditures, focusing primarily on discretionary spending, and looking to protect our core services of instruction, research, and student support. And they have made extraordinary progress, but we continue to drill even further down into the bedrock of which this university sits upon. Vice Chancellor Wandschall is chairing an asset management working group that is looking at models to monetize the university's physical assets, including the sale of underutilized assets and private-public initiatives, which has been a hallmark of some of our capital program. And lastly, our Senior Vice Chancellor Rick Schaefer, and who is leading the Regulatory Reform Group to examine the Board of Trustees' bylaws, our civil service rules, and collective bargaining agreements, whether they are supportive on the activities and how they will interact with the other two groups and see how those agreements can support what will come out of those two groups. The main event this past summer, as it related to higher education, was the very intense public debate regarding the Public Higher Education Empowerment and Innovation Act. This is something that was built on the foundation of the CUNY Compact, which then became the New York State Compact for Higher Education. We were not, we did not really take as much of a leadership role in this particular program, although, on balance, we were very supportive of many of the components of the program. I was somewhat concerned that the program, in part, transferred too much of the risk from the state of New York onto the shoulders of students. And I thought that that was not the most optimal way that we should proceed with coming up with a new financial plan for the university, for both CUNY and SUNY. It also did not protect our mandatory courses, nor did it index the Tuition Assistance Program to increases in tuition. At the end of the day, it was conceivable that the very good intentions behind this program, while there were potentially steep tuition increases, I think some of, many of our students could have been compromised with their inability to really pay the bills unless the TAP Assistance Program was indexed. So we are facing a new legislature. We are going to face a new governor. And we're going to be strenuously active in promoting what this Board, and this administration, and our presidents on our campuses have supported now for several years, the notion of the Compact, which is a vehicle for investment in the university that spreads the risk among the various stakeholders here in the university. And hopefully, we will get some attention. I want to make it very clear that our financial health is not nearly what it should be. And as I said earlier, it's going to get worse before it gets better. We will be coming in, in November, asking for change in our tuition policy here at the university. If you remember, as a Board, the Board advanced a two percent tuition increase starting this fall, but that revenue would not be recognized by actions of the New York State Legislature. So we are without a tuition increase this fall. But we cannot allow the dilution of academic quality to happen unless we get some investment. And we are now working quietly to devise an appropriate strategy in consultation with SUNY, in consultation with members of the state legislature, and will unravel this in a way that I think will be not only protective of the university going forward, but be sensitive to the students here at this university that would be most affected by an increase like I announced at the Council of Presidents' meeting, our last Council of Presidents' meeting, that I will be visiting each of the college campuses again, in a formal way, starting in January. And I want to get out there and meet with the faculty and the students and the support systems that you have, people at the campuses, to try to explain directly from me and obviously with the president alongside at these meetings, to talk about the fiscal health of the university, the challenges that we have ahead, and answer any questions about new initiatives at the university and how we can start working in a very collaborative way as we look to ensure that the university's position is as secure as we can within a very difficult financial environment. But there's a lot of work that still needs to be done. You know, universities are organic entities. They shed things and they acquire things. We acquire much more efficiently than we shed. And that's something that we're going to have to work on. But one thing that I anticipate we shedding is the CUNY Proficiency Exam, known effectively as the CPE exam. This is a CUNY-wide exam used to certify each student as ready for upper-level undergraduate work. I recommended the CPE early in my tenure as Chancellor to the Board, and the CPE has worked quite effectively for us. But quite frankly, we have so improved as a university, I don't think it's necessary to have the CPE anymore. But we are having committees that are being led by Lexa Loeb. These committees are largely faculty, and I would imagine that sometime very soon, we will be coming into the Board and recommending that we put to sleep the CUNY Proficiency Exam. But there are things that we have to be very careful about before we actually do that. One of the reasons, let me tell you one of the, a couple of reasons why I think the CPE has outlived its usefulness. Number one, I like to look at data. I look at data very, very carefully, as I'm sure many of you do as well. The results of the CPE are highly correlated with grades. And if they're highly correlated with grades, then one could say that grades should be a surrogate for the CPE exam, and that is one driver. The second driver is that the CPE is not indexed, it's not benchmarked, it doesn't have the psychometric purity that an exam which would be normed to other peers would have. And I think that's something that should be a concern after so long a lifespan. And lastly, the CPE costs five million dollars a year to run. And we can use that five million dollars in other ways. We are now a mature institution, given that we have worked so hard, all of us, to bring the academic integrity of the institution up to where it lives today, that we should be able to not be fearful of looking at variety of tests that really show, number one, that they're psychologically, that they're psychometrically pure, that they rise to the standard of reliability, that they rise to the standard, that they actually measure what we expect them to measure, that the test really shows the value added to an experience at a university. We ought to know what students know when they come in and what students learn when they leave. Moving into this environment will require very, very thorough work with our faculties across the university. And I've asked Lexa Loeb to start that process as soon as is practical, so that we can have that kind of discussion and see where it is that we need to go. Few other things. I am still, and I think everybody in this room, still not happy with our articulation among our campuses in the university. I alone, since I have been Chancellor, have brought to the Board at least two possibly- I alone, since I have been chancellor, have brought to the board at least two, possibly three, actions, policy actions around articulation. It is still not working as effectively as I think it needs to work. And I believe we need to do much more work collectively to attack the problem very seriously and finally, come to a convergent solution that all of us feel comfortable with and not have the situations that we have today. I am now looking at data. Mr. Chairman, you would, this would interest you as other members of the board. When we look at how many credits the average student takes upon getting a degree, it is really appalling. And the reason that the numbers are so high is very, very much directly related to how we deal with students transferring from within the CUNY system to someplace else in the CUNY system. It is unfair to the student, it's unjust, it slows their progress towards a degree when we should be graduating them in much shorter periods of time. So, we have to look at that very carefully, and we're committed to do that. Couple of announcements. Today, I was with Mayor Bloomberg at a very interesting summit on education that is taking place over the next couple of days that was broadcast all over the United States. And we have been working very closely with the Department of Education. And if you read Mayor Bloomberg's very fine speech, I thought, that he made today, there were two very significant announcements that were made. One announcement is very much directly related to what I asked John Mogalescu to do several years ago. I asked him to work with the DOE. This resulted from discussions that I've had with Chancellor Joel Klein about we ought to get the two systems to open up the hoods and let us each look into each other's hood, look at the data, and find out what works, what doesn't work. We're concerned about students coming to CUNY ready to learn, and if they're not ready to learn, it costs us an enormous amount of money to redo what should have been learned in high school. And the schools, obviously, are concerned about knowing that their students are getting the right kind of experience in K through 12, so that when they leave that environment, they're ready for the job that they may want to get, or they're ready for education beyond high school. The real discussion today is not as much about graduation rates, although that is enormously important. It's about college readiness. College readiness is captured, has captured the conversation across the United States, both in lower ed and in higher ed. In higher ed, because we are so deeply concerned about the limited resources that we have. And in lower ed, they are deeply concerned about learning how they can best prepare students to go on to higher ed. I am pleased to announce, which was usurped by Mayor Bloomberg's announcement today, that the Gates Foundation, after a very arduous competition, has selected four states. New York State is one. The award is coming to the City University of New York. It is a collaborative with the DOE. It's not a huge amount of money, but it's the opening salvo on a very important discussion. It's a $3 million contribution. And John, you're the one and the very able group of people that you work with throughout the university, and this was a wide collaborative, the faculty across the university are to be commended for that very good work. The degree to which the Gates Foundation continues to believe in the City University of New York, and this being the latest, this competition, I don't know how many states started in the competition. It was whittled down to semifinalists and it finally got to the finals, and we won. So, John, thank you, and thank your staff. The second announcement is something that involves not only the DOE, but the City University of New York. And it is a program that basically we started two years ago at New York City College of Technology under the very able guidance of President Russ Hotsler. This is a five-year program integrating the experiences in high school and at the end of that experience, getting a two-year degree at New York City College of Technology. In fact, the program is so successful, we just got an accommodation from the Board of Regents saying how innovative this program is and a $500,000 grant, which is always good. We like expanding our balance sheets here at the university, so that was a good thing as well. IBM has challenged both CUNY and the DOE, and they said if you could continue the program that you started at New York City Tech and expanded to other community colleges, we will guarantee that every student that graduates, a job will be available at IBM. And this will be more in, not in computer science, but in computer engineering, people who appropriately, at that level of education, would get the experience between high school and a two-year degree to go and work at IBM. So, it's not a brand-new program. We've done this before. It'll require, obviously, working with our faculties to develop the courses, which should not be very difficult. The model is there. It's institutionalized at CUNY, and that's a very good thing. And I thank the, I thank the Gates Foundation for that great show of support. I'd like to congratulate Dean Stephen Shepherd for achieving the match for the $3 million grant from the Tauck Foundation. This was matched by the Knight Foundation. We now have the Tauck-Night Foundation Center for Entrepreneurial Journalism. It will start its initial capitalization at $10 million. Steve Shepherd, congratulations. That's a very nice gift. I'd like to commend President William Pollard, who is in North Carolina this evening, giving a lecture at Shore University on his recognition as a social work pioneer by the National Association of Social Workers. I'd like to congratulate Sherri Cleary, Executive Director of the CUNY Informal Family Childcare Training Project, on her appointment by Governor David Patterson as the co-chair of his Early Childhood Advisory Council. And get this, for the first time in this university's history, we have 31 junior faculty from various campuses who have satisfied the very onerous criteria to be eligible for consideration for an NSF Early Career Award. We have never seen this level of advocacy. And I would imagine we're going to be very successful in that as well. And lastly, what better way to talk about the integrated university than to talk about tornadoes? We had a very nasty tornado that hit Park Slope, and it hit Queens College, and it hit the CUNY Law School. And within minutes, Alan Dobrin, who is our chief operating officer, who wears many hats, as all of you know, went into action with a group, and we swooped in, we didn't move trees, but we created a sense of calmness with the president and the dean of our law school to create the necessary flow of dollars and support. That is, in part, the power of a system, and I want to thank you, Alan, for jumping in so cautiously but thoroughly. And if I don't mention this, I'm going to get a jab by Lexa Loeb. I encourage members of the CUNY community to please review and submit comments within the next three days on a proposal, on the proposals of the Tobacco Policy Advisory Committee. And you could do that at www.cuny.edu/helpcuny. Mr. Chairman, that completes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Chancellor. Are there questions or comments from the trustees about the chancellor's report?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chancellor. We'll turn now to policy items that require a vote. I would like to move the adoption of the chancellor's university report for September 27th, 2010. You have copies at the table. May I have a second?
Second.
Are there questions or comments on the report? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions, the report is adopted. May I move the approval of the minutes of the regular board meeting and executive session of June 28th, 2010? You have a copy of the draft minutes in your meeting books. May I have a second, please? Thank you. Are there discussion or requests for revisions? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions, the minutes are adopted. We'll turn next to our committee reports. I'd like to call first on the Committee on Fiscal Affairs, trustee Joe Loder.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Committee on Fiscal Affairs met on August 30th, 2010. After approval of the minutes of June 7th committee meeting, Chancellor Goldstein gave a comprehensive review of the current financial position of the university and the steps that will need to be taken in the future to protect the core mission of the institution. After Chancellor Goldstein's presentation, Associate Vice Chancellor Sapienza gave an update of the state and city budget. Following the presentations, the committee approved following resolutions. Calendar item 3A is a resolution calling for the trustees of the university to authorize the general counsel to execute a contract on behalf of the Office of University Controller to enter into a contract with a vendor who will provide hazardous waste removal services. Such purchase shall not exceed an estimated annual cost of $300,000, chargeable to each college in accordance with its usage for the applicable fiscal year. The contract term shall be five years, with an option for the university to terminate on each anniversary date of the contract. Mr. Chairman, I move the approval and adoption of calendar item 3A.
May I have a second, please? Are there questions for the Committee on Hazardous Waste Removals? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions, 3A is adopted.
Okay. Calendar item 3B is a resolution calling for the trustees of the university to authorize the general counsel to enter into a contract on behalf of the university controller to enter into a contract with a vendor who will provide student loan billing services. Such purchase shall not exceed an estimated cost of $300,000 during the applicable fiscal year. The contract as well shall be for five years, with an option for the university to terminate on each anniversary date of the contract. Mr. Chairman, I move the approval and adoption of calendar item 3B.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Are there questions for the Committee on 3B? Not? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, abstentions, 3B carries.
Following the approval of the action items by the committee, the committee received a presentation from Cambridge Associates, our investment consultants, with an update of current market conditions and the results of our investment portfolio. Mr. Chairman, this concludes my report. And I'll turn it over to Matt first. And at this point, sorry, Associate Vice Chancellor Sapienza will be providing a report to the trustees, I think in front of you. You have a powerful presentation, which will walk through.
Thank you, trustee Loder, and good afternoon, everyone. I'm going to be taking you through some of the slides that are contained in this presentation to detail some of the numbers that were contained in the state and city budgets and its effect on CUNY's financial plan for the current year. So, we'll start with the state budget and the senior colleges on slide two. The 2011 state enacted budget, which was enacted during the first week in August, contained $84.4 million in operating budget reductions for the senior colleges. And 20.8 million of that was tied to workforce savings. The governor and his executive budget had included a $250 million target for statewide workforce savings. And although the governor has not been able to negotiate any formal mechanisms with the labor unions to achieve these savings, the 20.8 million has been reduced from CUNY's budget, our piece of the 250 million. So, over the last three fiscal years, starting in fiscal '09, we have now sustained $205 million in cuts from the state for the senior colleges. We had a $68 million cut in 2009, $53 million last year, and now $84 million in the current year. And so, our senior colleges are now starting to feel the cumulative effect that these cuts have had. On page three, we describe the result of these cuts on the senior colleges' current year condition. And when the university allocated its budget for the current year to the senior colleges, all colleges' base budgets were reduced by 2.5%, generated about $29 million in savings. In addition, the college revenue targets were increased by $7 million. Lastly, the university asked all senior colleges to reserve an additional 1 and 1/4% of their budgets in the current year as a hedge against the future uncertainty that is in the state budget. And so, the senior college presidents and their administrators are making those decisions and working on their internal financial plans, which are due back to the university next week. The community colleges on page four, the state budget again has some significant challenges for the community colleges. All base aid per FTE was reduced by $285. The governor had proposed this reduction in his executive budget. The state legislator, state legislature and his proposal had restored this entire cut, $285 per FTE. However, the governor, when he went in and line item vetoed all of the legislative ads, included in that was the base aid restoration. And so, as a result, CUNY's community colleges lost $20 million in state operating aid for the current year. And you can see on that third bullet there on page four, that this continues a decline in the state aid, base aid for community colleges. It was at $2,675 for FTE in fiscal 2009, and now it's down to $2,260 for FTE. There's also a risk in the state budget going forward for the community colleges in 2012 because of our total base aid for the community colleges, which is $187 million, about $33 million of that is generated through federal stimulus funds, which are set to sunset. So, this is a risk that is contained in the state budget for the community colleges for both CUNY and SUNY, something that we'll have to keep our eye on going forward for fiscal 2012. So, again, the results for the community colleges in the current year, which we described on page five, is a year in which college presidents are going to have to make some difficult decisions. The operating loss is $20 million, as I said earlier. And this comes on top of year fiscal '10, in which the community colleges had to sustain a mid-year cut of $14 million. Of that $14 million, about half of it was taken from college-based budgets. The other half, the university took on. But those cuts are baseline going forward, and so the $20 million is in addition to those mid-year reductions. As a result, the community college allocation model for the current year was funded at about 90%. And while that may sound like a high amount, just to put it in context, over the last several years, fiscal '10, fiscal '09, we've been able to fund about 98 or 99% of this aspirational allocation model. But this year, because of the $20 million loss in the mid-year cuts that we took last year, we were only able to fund 90%. So, the community colleges are certainly starting to feel that diminishing in resources. Last week, the mayor also announced a new PEG program for all city agencies. The reduction was 5.4%. The reduction was 5.4 percent for all agencies in the current year, 8 percent for next year. The exceptions were the uniformed agencies and the Department of Education, whose reduction lengths were half of those targets. But for the university, what it means is a target of $13 million in the current year and $60 million for next year. Now, this is part of the mayor's November financial plan process, so right now they are targets. And we will be working with the community colleges to develop plans as to how we would meet these targets. We'll certainly continue to work with City Hall, Boston Management and Borough and the City Council to make sure that they're aware of the harmful effect these reductions would have on our community colleges. On page six, on financial aid, you should be aware that, again, due to the governor's veto process, on TAP, there were significant changes. There was a $75 reduction to all TAP awards in the current year. There were also new satisfactory academic progress standards were established, which would require students to take 15 credits a semester to remain eligible, which will take effect next fall. TAP awards will also not be available to graduate students this year. On the city side, the balloon scholarships were reduced from $9.5 million in 2010 to $6 million this year. The one piece of good news on financial aid is federal programs were increased for the current year from $5,350 to $5,550. So that will help to offset some of the losses in TAP that our students will be feeling in the current year. On slide seven, some of the other challenges that came outside of CUNY's budget. CUNY childcare centers receive appropriations through the State Office of Children and Family Services, and their budget was reduced by $750,000 in the current year. And in addition, CUNY LEED's program, which is a program which provides educational and vocational services to students with disabilities, they have received funding over the last several years through the state education department. But those funds were eliminated completely as part of the fiscal year 11 state budget. The rest of the slides, the chancellor went over in his comments, so I, I won't go through them. But I will take you to the chart that we have in our appendix, we'll start on page 14, because I, I think they illustrate some, some key points that you should be aware of. On page 14, you see the trends in our three major funding sources over the last 20 years, from 1991 to 2011: state aid, city support, and tuition and other revenue. And you see the green line there, the city support is, is fairly steady. The tuition, you see those years where there were no tuition increases, and then you see those large spikes in which tuition increases were imposed as a, as a result of reductions in state aid. And you see the state line steadily increasing. There are some down years, but overall, over the last 20 years, it's up. However, page 15, when you adjust those amounts for the higher education pricing decks, you see a very different story in terms of what our purchasing power is this year versus what it was 20 years ago. And you see, in terms of state aid, we're down from 1 billion, 1.4 billion to 1.2 billion. And even on city support, you see that that number is down also with tuition going up. And so, our purchasing power is less. And on page 16, it's even more illustrative. Page 16 takes those same numbers and incorporates our growing enrollment over that time. And so, you can see, per FTE, on state aid, we have $6,367 per FTE in state aid this year. Adjusted for the higher education pricing decks, in 1991, that same number was $9,967. So it's a reduction of about 36 percent over 20 years. And same on, on city support, it is down slightly, certainly not as much as on state. And tuition is up due to the, to the tuition pieces that we've had over that, over that period of time. So, again, as the chancellor said, we are in a challenging year. Fiscal year 12 looks to be as challenging, if not more so. And as the chancellor mentioned in his remarks, we will be presenting our 2012, 2012 budget request at the board meeting on, on November 22nd. So now, I'd like to ask Vice Chancellor Weinshahl to go through the, our capital program.
Thank you, Matt. I think as the Board of Trustees remembers, a couple of years ago, we did a state of good repair study here at the university. And the state of good repair was not very good. We had about $1.6 billion of deferred maintenance and construction that we had done on our campuses. So in dealing with the city of New York on our capital budget, our first priority was really to get as many of these projects funded as possible. The good news is that on the senior college level, we got about $22 million from both the City Council and the borough presidents. About 80 percent of those projects are critical maintenance projects. On the community college side, we got about another $22 million. But the good news was that the city of New York, in their September capital plan, funded another $12 million worth of projects for our community colleges. And as the board knows, that's very important because we get to match that with state dollars. So, in essence, we got another $24 million of money to spend on critical maintenance projects. I think, like on the expense side, we're very concerned on the city side in next year's fiscal plan, and we'll have to sort of confront it as it comes. On the state side, we have a very robust, robust capital plan this year. We anticipate spending over $640 million on our projects. Projects like the John Jay Expansion, ASRC, our new science building at Lehman, the new Fineman Hall Building, which if you go downtown, you'll see the steel is already coming up. We're up to the fifth floor on that new building. Our concern is for next year. We would, in an all-perfect world, like to spend over $600 million. But in the fiscal plan that the state DOB has for us, we have a deficit in terms of how much cash they can provide for us. So I guess, like on the expense side, we'll be really watching very carefully next year and dealing with DOB to try and keep our capital plan moving forward.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
All right. I'll pause to see if any trustees have questions for Mr. Sapienza or Ms., Ms. Weinshahl. If it's not, thank you very much for those reports. I'd like to ask that the financial report be included in the minutes of the meeting. I'd like to turn next to the Committee on Faculty, Staff and Administration. I'd like to call on trustee Valerie Beal.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The August 30th, 2010 meeting of the Board Committee on Faculty, Staff and Administration was canceled. However, a number of items were subsequently brought to our attention, which in order to be improved in a timely manner, have been reviewed by the committee members and which I will share with the board today. The first added item, number 4A, amends the governance plan of the Graduate School of the Graduate, the Graduate School and University Center to require each program's executive committee to review its program governance on a regular schedule to ensure that it reflects governance practices and comports with graduate school governance, CUNY Board of Trustees policies, and New York state law, and to make any necessary amendments and provisions. Since the plan may change more frequently than program governance documents, each program should ensure that its governance document remains consistent with the plan, as well as with its most recent practices. Mr. Chair, I present item 4A for the board's approval.
All right. I'll second that item. Are there questions for the Committee on the Governance Plan Changes? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? That carries.
The second added calendar item, number 4B, provides notice to the board of a proposed amendment to section 6.2.4C of the bylaws, which specifies that a person holding a professor title with tenure at another institution may be appointed as a professor with immediate tenure at the board's discretion. The current language omits mention of the title of associate professor, thus necessitating an action of the board to waive the bylaws for appointments with immediate tenure in that title where previous tenure exists. Clarifying the bylaw language will eliminate an unnecessary bureaucratic hurdle for the campus. Notice is hereby provided to the board of this proposed amendment to the bylaws, which will be brought for approval at our January meeting. The members of the Board Committee on Faculty, Staff and Administration also reviewed three appointments at or above the level of vice president. They are as follows. Appointment of Karen Wiverspoon, a vice president for Government and Community Affairs at the City College of New York. Appointment of Dr. A. Ramona Brown as vice president for Student Affairs at the College of Student at Staten Island. And three, appointment of Dolores Schrern as vice president for Institutional Advancement at New York College. These appointments have been included in the Chancellor's University Report for approval by the board. This concludes my report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. We'll turn next to the Committee on Facilities Planning and Management. May I call on trustee Frida Foster?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The August 30th committee meeting for facilities and planning was canceled. However, I present to the board the following resolution as an added item to the board calendar of September 27. CUNY School of Law, new facilities at Two Court Square, Long Island City. To secure board approval for the selection of the firm of Cone Peterson Fox, or KPF, to provide professional services as required for the design of new facilities at Two Court Square for the CUNY School of Law, and to authorize the City University Construction Fund to enter into a consultant contract with KPF for these services. I'll now call on Vice Chancellor Weinshahl to give a brief summary of this resolution.
Thank you. The CUNY School of Law will be relocating to new facilities in an existing building at Two Court Square in Long Island City. We request board approval of the selection of the firm of Cone Peterson Fox to provide professional services for the design of the new facilities. KPF designed the existing building, completed in 2007, and was selected based on their knowledge of the structure and vast experience designing other higher education facilities, such as the building that we're in this evening. The design services, which were initially, which were initially to be managed by Citibank, the current owner of Two Court Square, are now to be managed by CUNY due to a change in the project's funding. The available budget for the design and construction services is $25 million in state appropriations. Approximately $1.6 million is available for design fees. The scope of services includes a complete build-out of the ground floor, reconfiguration of several top, upper floors, IT AV design, new vertical circulation, and new signage.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That concludes my report.
Do we need to adopt this as a motion?
Yes, yes.
All right. May I have a second for the committee's motion?
Second.
Questions on the item? Or for Chancellor Weinshahl? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? That carries. Anything further to report from the committee? No. Thank you. I would like to take up the honorary degree matter following our executive session. So I'll go to item number seven, which is, does, requires no action, but is simply a notification of actions taken by the Board of Trustees Executive Committee on July 22nd, 2010. We took up three items recommended by the chancellor, and the executive committee unanimously supported and voted in favor of each item, and concluded that it would be detrimental to the university to delay the advancement of those matters until the regular board meeting. The actions taken are listed as item 7A, Hunter College, acceptance of gift and naming of Casa Lali. Item 7B, the City University of New York amendment to the 2010 early retirement incentive program. And item 7C, which is a central office designation of the founding president of the new community, of the new CUNY community college. So these items are noticed on your, on your calendars. That concludes the business for this first of our public sessions, which I declare adjourned, and we will move into executive session as soon as the room is cleared. (Crosstalk)
So then, you want to look at November 19th? Well, November 19th.
Yes, Thanksgiving.
Sure. (Laughter). Or November 5th?
Have we got it? Have we got it for him? Or eight?
Just a little. On the 5th? Okay. So then, it's November 11th, yeah?
I would like to call this public session of the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York to order. We have three items to take up. First, item number six on the calendar of the previous public session. I would like to move the, the award of the honorary degree at City College to Mario Vargas Loza, truly one of the world's great writers. May I have a second? Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? That carries. Now, I'd like to move to item number eight, and I would like to propose the following resolution: that Mark B. Shaw be appointed Senior Vice Chancellor for Budget, Finance, and Fiscal Policy effective September 28th, 2010, at a compensation to be recommended by the chancellor to the board, subject to financial ability. After a nationwide search chaired by College of Staten Island President Tomas Morales, two finalists were forwarded to the chancellor for consideration. Mark Shaw brings an outstanding set of experiences and qualifications to the position. He has held many high-level positions in government and in related agencies. Among them are Commissioner of Finance, Budget Director, First Deputy Mayor of the City of New York, Executive Director of the New York State Metropolitan Transportation Authority, and Senior Advisor to the Governor of the State of New York. Most recently, he served as interim Senior Vice Chancellor for Budget, Finance, and Financial Policy at CUNY. Mr. Shaw holds a BA from the State University College at Buffalo and an MA from the State University of New York at Buffalo. May I have a second?
Second.
Any comments or discussions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? Item number eight is adopted. So everything's going to be all right, right, Mark?
No. Actually, not. Look, I'm, I'm obviously honored and privileged to accept this role. It's been a pleasure serving on this board for seven years and being interim Senior Vice Chancellor for the last seven months. Obviously, I want to thank the chairman, the board members, and the chancellor for their support and this action. You know, the earlier discussion we had here about the fiscal storm clouds that are swirling around city and state finances is a reminder of the work that we have before us. You know, for better or worse, I've spent a not insignificant portion of my career dealing with a variety of state and city fiscal crises. I hope that I can play a role in guiding this university through these tough times. And while a good part of my career has been associated with fiscal distress, I only hope that you, one, don't shoot the messenger, and, two, to remember to distinguish between simple correlation and causation.
Fiscal distress is better than intestinal distress.
I'm not so sure. All right. Thank you. Welcome, Mark. I'd like to turn to Vice Chair Phil Berry for item number nine.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to bring before the board the appointment of Vice Chancellor for Student Affairs. Resolve that Frank D. Sanchez be appointed Vice Chancellor for Student Affairs effective January 3rd, 2011, at a compensation to be recommended by the chancellor to the board, subject to financial ability. Our explanation for that is that after a nationwide search that was conducted by York College President Marcia Keys, four finalists were forwarded to the chancellor for consideration. Dr. Frank Sanchez, the selected candidate, brings a unique set of experiences and qualifications to the position. Dr. Sanchez is currently Associate Vice Chancellor for Student Affairs. by the chancellor to the board, subject to financial ability. Our explanation for that is that after a nationwide search that was conducted by York College President Marcia Keys, four finalists were forwarded to the chancellor for consideration. Dr. Frank Sanchez, the selected candidate, brings a unique set of experiences and qualifications to the position. Dr. Sanchez is currently Associate Vice Chancellor for Student Affairs at the University of Colorado Denver, where he is responsible for centralized student programs at both downtown Denver campus and the Ann Schultz Medical Center. He was previously the Vice President for Student Affairs at Adams State College in Colorado. Dr. Sanchez, who has focused on the interrelationship of student affairs and academic success, holds a BA in psychology from the University of Nebraska-Lincoln, an MS in student affairs in higher education from Colorado State University, and a PhD in higher education administration from Indiana University.
I'd like to second the motion. Are there questions or comments on this motion? If not, all in favor, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Abstention? The motion carries. Welcome to you, Dr. Sanchez.
Well, thank you, Chairman Schmidt. I also want to take a minute to thank, of course, Chancellor Goldstein, and the entire Board of Trustees, as well as the members of the search committee. I know our student, Mr. Provost, who's here, was a part of the search and selection committee. And to be completely honest with everyone, I think it's fair to say that words cannot adequately describe what a tremendous honor and privilege it is to serve really all the CUNY institutions and our students as the Vice Chancellor for Student Affairs. And there are a variety of reasons why this work with, and I think, for our students, is so incredibly important to me. You know, I've come to believe that the future and success of American higher education will be dependent on our ability to engage and advance our diverse and complex student populations as they prepare for a global society. And our students here at CUNY, it's a very distinctive group of students, I think, nationally. And we have incredible diversity in values and attitudes and lifestyles, and ethnic and cultural heritage, diversity in income, and languages, and ages, and passions and strength. I mean, the list really goes on. But we really have an opportunity to serve our students regardless of their individual circumstances, regardless or despite their individual stations in life, and help them get that college degree. We have an opportunity to deliver an incredibly important promise. And that promise is a college degree. And I think it's more than about access. Access is important, but it's about the delivery of a quality education, and ultimately, the completion of that college degree. For me, nothing could be more professionally rewarding than to do this work with our student affairs professionals and side-by-side with our students than to serve here at CUNY. You know, 23 institutions to do this good work, nearly a half a million students in the classroom and in adult continuing and professional education. And I'll tell you, those are really the reasons why this work is so important to me and why I'm delighted to be working with and joining truly a remarkable team of administrators at CUNY. And so, again, thank you, Chancellor Goldstein, thank you, Chairman Schmidt, and all the members of the Board of Trustees for this exciting opportunity for me. Thank you.
That concludes our public business for this session. I declare the meeting adjourned.